I'd like to call the meeting to order and welcome everyone to the Laverne Planning Commission regular meeting on January 20th, on January 30th at 2024 at 6:00 PM. First item of business, we do have a quorum. Our first item is to approve the meeting minutes from the December 26, 2023 meeting.
So moved.
We have a motion to accept. We have a second.
Second.
We have a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. I am correct, we didn't have anyone sign up for the public comment period. So at this point, I will turn it over to the city attorney, Mr. Coe, for a motion to nominate an elected chairman for a one-year term.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. So at this point in time, the chair is vacated and I will be the interim chair for purposes of nomination and appointment of a new chairperson and other officers. So at this time, the floor is open for nomination of a new chairperson for a one-year term.
Nominate Earl Garvin.
We have a nomination as their second.
Second.
They all in favor signify. Any other nominations? Hearing none. All in favor of electing Earl Garvin to another one-year term as chairperson signify so by saying aye.
Aye.
Were there any opposed? Motion carries. Congratulations, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, ma'am. And thank everyone once again.
Second, third, and fourth, yeah.
Exactly, sir. So on number four, we have a motion to nominate and elect a vice chairman for a one-year term, and I will entertain a nomination.
I nominate Jason Cole, mayor.
We have a nomination for Mr. Cole. I second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Congratulations, Mayor Cole. You are also vice chair. And on item number five, motion to nominate and elect a secretary for a one-year term.
Make a motion to nominate Graham Coats.
Second.
We have a motion for Mr. Coats and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion passes. Congratulations, Mr. Coats. Thank you for your hard work all these years. So, item number six has been moved, so we'll actually start on item number seven. Site plan, co-op business park lot three, two buildings totaling 171,244 square feet on 43.88 acres requested by Kimley Horn. Property located on Old Waldron Road, tax map 15, parcels 24 and 28. I-2 heavy industrial zoning district property owned by Tennessee Farmers Cooperative, Inc. Mr. Logan.
Thanks. And a quick announcement before we get started. The planning commission and Boza training, you've probably seen the emails, but that's been scheduled for the last Saturday of February. So that's February the 24th, and that will start at 8:00 AM. Most of you know, but the state requirement is that all Boza and planning commission members have four, minimum of four hours of training a year or so. And staff too, that are here tonight that need those hours will also be at the training. So it's the last Saturday in February and 8 o'clock, and it'll be at the Stormwater and Codes and Planning Building at 5175 Murfreesboro. If you have any questions, just let me know. Thank you. So item number seven is a request for site plan from the co-op business park. And this is lot three of the proposed business park. So on the screen, you can see the area in blue. And the zoning, this is I-2 heavy industrial zoning. And these are some photos of the co-op property. And another photo there of the existing buildings. It's a really large area, so it would be a really large development. And then this last photo is a picture of Waldron Road at one of the driveways, driveway cuts that's existing. So the private road that's installed by the developer will start from here. So that gives you an idea of that location. Of course, the first building of this whole development falls in the architectural overlay, but the rest of the buildings are outside of that overlay as you move back in the property. So this lot, lot three, will contain buildings eight and nine, and lot three is roughly 44 And in total, this project will have nine new buildings, and they will total about 1,081,000 square feet of new industrial and warehouse space. So you can see on this image, lot one and two to the east, or excuse me, to the west are closest to Waldron Road. So lot three is in the rear, which is to the right in this image, and contains the existing co-op and the elevators and all that. It's a little bit closer view. That shows all three lots. So the planning comments, the only planning comment has to do with sidewalks on Old Waldron. And I believe that they will elect to do the fee and lieu unless something's changed. And then that's, that's all for planning, and I'll turn it over to Mr. Lyd. Thank you.
The engineering comments have been addressed. However, utilities has a few comments. They're relatively minor, but they do require some coordination between the developer's engineer and the, Mr. Talovich, the utilities engineer for the city.
Is there a representative here this evening for this project?
Good evening. Jeff Knechtney, Panatoni Development Company, One Music Circle South, Nashville, Tennessee.
Thank you, sir.
So Kimberly, let me back up. So these two buildings, buildings eight and nine, these are going to be buildings that are owned, operated, funded by the Tennessee Farmers Co-op. So they're not going to be part of the Panatoni building speculative industrial buildings. We're building it for them, but it really represents an expansion of the co-op campus, not only in terms of square footage, but employment as well. So what we're talking about tonight relative to the sidewalk issue that Bo brought up is really we're looking at about 1,600 linear foot sidewalk fee and lieu that we're asking for help from, because it's really going to be, Rob's going to pass out a couple exhibits. So it's going to be basically the area from where the crane area is to the lot two starts. So what Kimberly Horn took a deep dive into trying to figure out sidewalks in this area. At the end of the day, what we realized that the Kimberly, that the co-op project is really a legacy project that predates the city of Laverne. You know, the co-op has been here probably 80 years. What we're running into is a significant amount of utilities in this area, specifically gas, electrical, that we're having a hard time engineering around to actually build some sidewalks, plus the road and drainage system is so narrow in that area, there's not enough right-of-way to actually build the sidewalks. So we are asking for a fee and lieu situation, but we are also asking for the fee and lieu to be based on 400 linear feet, which is directly in front of building nine, which is, that basically represents the limits of disturbance that we're, we're developing here. And the reason for that is, is really the co-op is sort of, the campus is sort of always ever-changing, modifying, developing, like we're doing here. There's a chance that the two office buildings on either side of building nine are going to be developed in the future or renovated in the future. We've done, at Park 24 up the road, we've done this phased-in approach with sidewalks and fee and lieu. And so it's, it's kind of, it is an important situation for the co-op. You know, the co-op represents the Tennessee farmers in the entire state. It's a little different than what the planning commission is used to seeing from guys like me or apartment developers or McDonald's or Thorntons that come up here. It's just another line item that you got to pay for. Here, it's something that, that money detracts from the farmers going back there. So we ask you guys to consider what else this project is doing. You know, we're, we're doing some drainage improvements along Old Waldron. We're going to do, improve some water quality issues that the town currently has, and we're obviously increasing the tax base. So that's what we're asking for. The CEO of the co-op is here. If you guys have any questions too, to talk about the sidewalk issue.
Thank you, sir. Comments from the board?
I, go ahead and tell the board. I've met with all of them about this. I don't have a problem myself with the phased-in, but it's ultimately, it's up to the board.
Mr. Jim, I met with them too. I just, I gave my thoughts and ideas to see if we could overcome some of the issues. My big thing for this board is we've been very consistent with sidewalks, and I think consistency needs to continue. I know this is a little different project, but consistency is what we're looking for. So I maintain that they adhere to what we've been doing with all the other applicants that's been coming in here or come up with some other resolution. I did suggest perhaps putting some of the monies for the sidewalk cost into down Old Nashville Highway on their property on the other side, just as a matter of interest, just to throw it there, but that I think was kicked back, or there was no comment on that. Drove down there today. Understand it's a very difficult street, as you can see, if you've been driven down it. But at the same time, if we do change, this board does change on this applicant, then everyone else that sees it's going to come in and do the same thing. And that, what does concern me in consistency, I think, is what this board needs to do.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Coleman?
I'm fine with the phased-in.
Smart.
I'm leaning toward what Graham's saying. I don't want to set precedent. This is a million square foot development, and we're talking about 1,600 square feet, I mean, 1,600 linear versus four, so.
Yeah, it's a different situation here, because it's different than what I'm doing in lots one and two. When I was saying a little earlier about, you know, I'm a commercial developer, we're used to doing it. This is going to be funded directly by a co-op, right? This 1,600 feet, it's a long ways. It's a lot of, it's a lot of sidewalk, it's a lot of fee and lieu for really what they're doing out there. It's not that much development for what they're doing. At some point, these other places will get developed, right? And what you don't know is, you pay a fee and lieu now, what happens if, you know, what happens if there's, you know, you guys decide to do the road over in the future, you know, Old Waldron probably is due for an upgrade at some point? You know, what happens if that development is going to be so significant at that point in time, they elect to relocate some utilities and build a sidewalk at that time? I think this gives the city and the co-op the most amount of flexibility to deal with what happens in the future. They're not, it's really just a deferral of this payment based on what's going to happen now in the future.
Where are we at on linear foot cost?
Twelve. Twelve?
Per square foot.
Per square.
Right. So it's $90,000 for 1,600 linear foot versus $24,000 for 400 linear foot.
And keep in mind, we are building on our piece. We're doing sidewalks, right? So I mean, we're handling that piece. So it's just this situation for the co-op, which is a unique situation.
Still with Graham.
Yes, sir. Mr. Jim?
Yeah, I'd say the same thing. I'm with Graham on this.
Ms. Carroll?
I'm with Graham.
So I think the board consensus is the 1,600 linear feet. If that's fine with you, we can proceed forward.
Well, we got to move on. So yeah, we will, we'll take that vote and then deal with it.
Well, good. So with that, do we have any other questions or comments for the applicant? If none, we'll entertain a motion, and that needs to be included in the motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to accept as soon upon the fee and lieu of the, what was you talking about, Gary?
$90,000.
$90,000.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Item number eight, concept plan, Laverne Business Center, two buildings totaling 346,800 square feet on 29 acres requested by Kimley Horn. Property located at 1701 Morris Street, tax map 14, parcels 46.01 and 25. I-1 light industrial zoning district property owned by Big Acquisitions LLC. Mr. Logan.
Thank you. This is a request for the concept plan at the Laverne Business Center. So this property is off of Morris Street and Minerva. So it's outlined here in the light blue, the light blue color, which is I-1 light industrial zoning. So this is Minerva Drive as it goes by All Van and then goes up to roughly a 90-degree turn, and that, that's Morris Street. So it gives you an idea of the general vicinity. And then here's some photos of the property. This is the existing gravel drive, and so this is taken at that 90-degree turn. So this is the home on your left as you're facing north. And then this is the home to the right. And this is all part of 1801 Morris Street, or excuse me, 1701 Morris Street. So the proposed layout that, that they've shown is for two new buildings, and they're indicated for new parcels that will be created with their plat. And together, those two proposed buildings total 346,000 square feet in new space. And they are proposing two phases, one phase for each building, of course. So this plan shows what they're proposing. And in December, they were proposing, they'd talked about accessing possibly through a private easement, but since that time, they've been working with staff and had several meetings. So now they're proposing to build a cul-de-sac at the end of Minerva Drive, which you can see here on this plan. So the cul-de-sac's right here. And the cul-de-sac will help take care of the city's needs as well as the access for This is a closer look at the two buildings. So proposed lot one, the building's about 180,000 square feet. And then to the right, lot two, that building would be 165,000. And of course, detention would go to the east side of lot two. So this image will show some of the traffic improvements that they're proposing. So you can probably see down here, north is to the right, so it's, it's not up as it normally would be. This is Minerva, and then you can see the cul-de-sac that they're proposing. And they are proposing a sidewalk on the north side of Minerva. They're not proposing on both sides at this time, but just that north side. And this is All Van property here, but it'll be on that side of the road. They're also proposing to change the road from a ditch section to curb and gutter.
On one side.
And, excuse me, on one side. And they will be installing a traffic light if they, if this plan's approved. So I think that pretty much covers it. There's not any technical comments from planning, but there are comments, some of these have been taken care of, like the cul-de-sac. But staff thought it was best to just leave the opinion that, it's always been staff's or planning department's opinion that the best way would be to access somehow to Dick Buchanan. I think this traffic light's going to be in the neighborhood of $400,000 or $500,000. So it surely would be nice to use an existing traffic light and not put another traffic light on Murfreesboro Road, which I guess that's up to the traffic engineer. But avoiding a light would be nice and using existing infrastructure, but according to the developer, that's not possible, that they've not found an avenue that'll work for them. So they, if you have to pick, I guess, lesser of two evils, so to speak, I guess this is the one to pick. But it's not optimal, but they are proposing a lot of improvements, so maybe that, that will work out and be good for the city. Other than that, I don't, I don't have anything. I'll turn it over to Gary.
All right. Most of my comments, they've addressed all the comments specific to the site and Stormwater and all that. It's, it's all about Minerva Road. The first thing is, they're showing basically all of their traffic will be using Minerva. Therefore, it's serving an industrial site, so we consider that an industrial road. Therefore, Public Works Industrial Road section, we recommend that the full width of this be that section, and that all the inches of asphalt and binder are in, are in the comments. So it's a very thick beefed-up industrial road section for an industrial access road. The variances that this plan is requesting, not providing curb and gutter on both sides is a variance to the subdivision regulations, and the section is shown on your notes. The fact that sidewalks aren't shown on both sides is a variance to the subdivision regulations, again, referenced on your notes. And then no grass median, they have to demonstrate that it's not feasible to put one in between the back of curb and the sidewalk, also subdivision regulations. So those are the three variances they're requesting of you.
Very good. Thank you, sir. Do we have a representative here this evening? If you would, state your name and address for the record, sir.
Good evening, everybody. Brett Beeler with Kimley Horn, 10 Leah Avenue, Suite 400, Nashville, Tennessee.
Thank you, sir. Would you like to address the curb and gutter and sidewalks and grass strip?
Yeah, I want to provide a little bit of context to planning's main comment about access as well. I hate to call it the lesser of two evils when it's the best available, so I just want to make that statement very clear to everybody here. Talking about the curb and gutter, we, we are requesting an atypical road section here. My comment here is that this, this is a retrofit. Most of the subdivision regs do uphold to, you know, more greenfield and new subdivisions. And so we all know when retrofits happen, we, we have obstacles we have to overcome. And so the main obstacle here along Minerva is drainage. And so I think, like I've said consistently to each of you, or like my client has said consistently to each of you here, there is a drainage issue in this area on the east side of Minerva Drive. So the reason we propose curb and gutter on one side of the street is to capture the majority of the watershed that is contributing water to Minerva Drive. So we put it on the most effective side. That's going to capture a majority of the runoff that currently hits the road and the neighbors on the east side today. If we were to propose curb and gutter on the east side of the road, or subsequently add a sidewalk on the east side of the road, we're going to worsen the drainage conditions for those neighbors and shove that stormwater and the ponding and the issues further onto their properties, then that's certainly not something we want to do.
Mr. Lyd, do you agree with that, sir?
Yes, sir. I mean, it will cost a lot of money to not do that. Let me put it that way. So to not force the flooding or more flooding and more issues onto the, onto the neighbors. I'm not going to say they would. There's always a way around it. It just costs a lot more money. The only concern we have is that the reason you, I'm, I'm less worried about the walk than I am the curb and gutter. Having a road that is kind of lopsided, has a shoulder on one side, curb and gutter on the other, on a foggy night, nighttime, it's just a little confusing.
A little uniformity.
Not the end of the world, just a little confusing. And a little confusing is something you try to avoid in roadway design.
I'd like to.
I mean, I'm at a bit of a confusing point here. It's a, it's a straight road all day long, all the way home. Yeah.
We, maybe reflectors on the side without curb and gutter, could those be put in on the edges? Is that?
Yes, sir. That would help.
Is that something we could do?
Yeah, like the, I mean, I'm just gut thinking from like a bike standpoint, you know, the flashers, the plastic breakaways.
Yeah, the ones that are in the road, though. You know what I'm saying?
Oh, on the asphalt.
On the asphalt, yeah.
Yeah, I think we can.
Sort of an edge of line type.
Yeah, they're typically on the yellow line in the middle of the road.
Maybe you're a rumble strip or something.
Well, they'd be white on the outside, yellow in the center, correct?
Yeah.
I think we can look into that.
That makes sense?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman?
Please, sir.
I'm, I'm just irrespective of the water issue, I, I just can't believe they're proposing having the sidewalk on the incorrect side of the street. The houses on the other side of the street, that's where you want the sidewalk. I mean, irrespective of the drains, I mean, let's get the sidewalk where the people are going to use it.
I, I hear you, and I definitely respect that opinion. What a raised sidewalk is, though, is essentially a curb. So you are creating the drainage issue, putting the sidewalk on that side.
I understand, but now they've got to cross the road with tractor trailers coming across to the other, the sidewalk on the other side of the street, just, I mean, common sense.
I understand.
Ruling, I understand the technical side of it. And two is the, the issue of tractor trailers going up and down a subdivision road is concerning to me, that they, they were there first. Admittedly, this is phase, I mean, it's marked as, as you've put the application in for it, but I think the applicant could do a better job of working more with the city and the residents on that street and the area to resolve some of the issues. My second comment is, explain to me, on the All Van property, the water comes off their property towards Minerva, correct?
In a roadside ditch that exists there today, yes.
I spoke to one of the residents on Mars, and she's indicating to me that the way the traffic circle is, the water is running across the road onto her property.
On Mars?
On Mars. So at some point in time, that makes sense that you've got the water running towards residential, and it's going to meet somewhere and go somewhere. So I'm just trying to figure out, have we got this right?
So just three quick points. That neighbor is, is further east off Mars, well away from the property and the development in question. I know the neighbor we're, we're speaking of. Two, development can't fix all of the natural problems that exist, especially when they're well outside the scope of the development. I think we're doing more than enough for the neighbors from a safety standpoint. On all of our industrial projects, specifically from a Kimley Horn standpoint, we really try to over-detain stormwater, because we know how much impervious area we're adding to our development. So we always try to over-detain the stormwater beyond the normal means of, of the requirements of the stormwater manual, and the goal of that is to reduce the amount of runoff beyond preconditions for what these properties are going to see. Now, again, I can't, I can't address that specific neighbor and fix her issues that exist today, because again, it's, I mean, she's, I can't even show you, she's so far off the page here to the south. But I can say that what we are proposing is going to benefit a majority of the neighbors that actually run along Minerva Drive. And again, a lot of these houses are in floodplain conditions. They have a stormwater problem today. They're going to have a stormwater problem with or without us, but we are improving the area and the conditions they have.
So I'm speaking to the owner of All Van. He's indicating that obviously, if this moves ahead, if it does, he is obviously then going to look at his property to do, you know, bigger buildings and bigger machinery. So my, my question to you is, have you spoken to the gentleman and see if you can work together to, to get the street as it should be for operating tractors and trailers?
So I'll let Andrew speak here a second, but the All Vans property is, is down towards Murfreesboro Road, and I think they're going to benefit from what we have proposed here today, but I'll let Andrew speak to the All Vans property.
Good evening. Andrew Maisy with Brennan Investment Group. I'm the developer of the project. My address is 4117 Hillsborough Pike in Nashville. So I have talked to All Vans' owner, their CEO and owner, to introduce our project and to collaborate, get his feedback. And so a couple of things I want to talk about that conversation, which actually was late last week, actually it was yesterday, talked to him yesterday. So, and Graham, thanks for introducing us. That was helpful. First of all, All Vans is extremely supportive of our project. He's thrilled. Today, All Van says that they're driving tractor trailers and flatbed trucks through the entrance on Murfreesboro, Murfreesboro Road, and oftentimes making that left heading towards Sam Ridley and Smyrna, and it's not a safe condition. So he's thrilled that, just from the traffic signal alone in that left turn lane that we're adding on Minerva, he's going to significantly benefit from Minerva, and he's extremely excited about that traffic signal. So that's point number one. And he's going to work with us on easements and making sure we have sufficient right-of-way, kind of right at that intersection right there at Minerva and Murfreesboro Road. So as far as, you know, are we going to work with them to make sure we get this right? Absolutely. Is that your question?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Just for the board, just again, planning heads, we are on the planning board. The other applicant on here this evening, you know, is going to put another traffic light on Veterans. So we're starting to really crimp up a lot of traffic lights on most by roads. It's just something to think about. I mean, that's what we had to plan ahead is, it's gonna, it's gonna get hectic.
Agreed. Any other questions or comments?
I can appreciate the addition of the traffic light. I think the, let's, looking at the residents, I think it makes their ingress and egress every day, you know, to that road, a lot safer. And I can also appreciate that. And I can also appreciate that you got to put the...you put the curbing and stormwater management on that side of the street, because if you do it on both sides, you're going to probably create a worse problem. I appreciate the efforts, and there is no perfect plan here, but this is, in my mind, it's a good plan. You've got the support of, you know, the neighboring business. Again, there are going to be 10 residents that are impacted, but I think their benefit...again, there's going to be truck traffic, that's a non-benefit. You know, the property's zoned what it's zoned. But they are going to have some alleviation of their flood issues. They're going to have, I think, a safer intersection at Murphysboro Road. They're going to have a street that's not 70 years old. So, I mean, you know, it's not perfect, but looking at the benefits versus the non-benefits, I'm, you know, I'm okay with what I'm seeing. It's not perfect, but we're not going to get perfect here.
Yes, sir.
So to ask, do you plan to follow the industrial road criteria that Gary outlined? The...with, as far as the gravel, the numbers that he's got for gravel binder and topping?
The materiality of the section, yeah, that would be our intention.
Okay.
Any questions or comments? We'll entertain a motion if no other comments.
I'll make a motion to accept as submitted.
Second.
We have a motion to accept as submitted. We have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
No, Mr. Coats?
No.
One else? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Item number nine, preliminary plat Laverne Business Center. Two lots totaling 29 acres requested by Kimley Horn Property located at 1701 Mars Street. Tax map 14, parcels 46.01 and 25. I-1 Light Industrial Zoning District, property owned by Big Acquisitions LLC. Mr. Logan.
Thanks. So this is the exact same property. This is the request for the preliminary plat. And here, they're proposing two lots on the 29 acres. And since we already went through those maps, I'll skip those, but this will create the lots that are not there today, and with the new lots, that will allow for the new buildings to proceed. In this image, you can see Lot 1 is to the west, and then Lot 2 would have the building and the detention area. And then the cul-de-sac will be in this small area, which they're calling Lot 3 on the plat. And I don't believe there's any comments at all, so that completes the report. Thanks.
Thank you. Do we have any questions or comments from the board?
Make a motion to accept as submitted.
We have a motion to accept as submitted. We have a second?
Second.
We have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Motion...Mr. Coats? Item number 10, motion passes. Item number 10, excuse me. Item number 10, concept plan and preliminary plat Uptown at Laverne. Eight commercial lots on approximately 14 acres requested by DSG. Property located at Murphysboro Road and Veterans Memorial Parkway. Tax map 14, parcel 72.04. C-2 Highway Service zoning district, property owned by Richland South LLC. Mr. Logan.
Thanks. So this is the request for concept plan and preliminary plat at the Uptown at Laverne Development. And with this plan, they're proposing eight commercial lots on about 14 acres. So on the screen, you can see the area outlined in blue. Some of the neighbors here, this is the post office, and then the Dunkin' Donuts beyond the post office, and then this large building here is the Mid-South Carpenter's Training Center and School that was built about two years ago. So this large area is what we're considering here with the Uptown Laverne Development. And for the zoning, this is all zoned C-2, which is highway service commercial that allows restaurants and retail establishments, such as the Aldi's that we'll get to in a minute after this item's covered. So these are the photos. You can see the townhomes, Central Park, townhomes in the distance. So this property is adjacent to that as well. So Murphysboro Road is here, and you're looking toward Nashville, and you just see the top of the post office in the distance. So this is a closer look at the layout showing the eight lots. And this lot here that is basically blank is the Mid-South Carpenter's Center. So again, it is 14 acres, and on the screen right now, you can see, of course, they're going to have to build detention areas to accommodate all the stormwater, so they're showing that in these plans as well. Beyond that, I don't believe, I think everything has been resolved. There may be one question about utilities, so I'll turn that over to Mr. White. Thanks.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, so just to kind of go over some of the discussions we've had, the initially submitted concept plan preliminary plat and site plan for the overall development. We've talked back and forth with them, that really isn't the way to do this. So what they're doing is, they've submitted concept plan preliminary plat, which you're looking at right now. If those are approved, then they will submit construction drawings under the subdivision regulations, and you'll be seeing the site plans under the zoning ordinance as the individual lots develop, which is more normal, our process. So you're not going to be...we're not going to be talking about the site plan as the next item. I believe that's going to be withdrawn.
Yes, sir.
The one...they've addressed all of our comments. It was quite a flurry by their engineer. The one comment we're showing under utilities is not a comment for their plans. Their site investigation identified a problem we possibly have with the water line not being in one of our easements. So all it is, is a notation where we're asking them for some help when they get to the final plat process of maybe giving us some extra easement. So as far as these plans submitted, there's no engineering or utility comments.
Perfect, thank you. Have any questions or comments?
No.
If none, we will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve. And a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. We will be going back to item number six on our agenda, everyone. So item number six, site plan Aldi's New Grocery Store of 19,432 square feet on 2.4 acres, requested by ISG. Property located at Murphysboro Road and Veterans Memorial Parkway. Tax map 14, parcel 72.04. C-2 Highway Service zoning district, property owned by Richland South LLC. Mr. Logan.
Thanks. So it'll take the computer a minute to catch up. Okay, so this is the site plan request for Aldi, and I spoke with the chairman before the meeting and thought it would be best to move Aldi behind the last item, which was Uptown at Laverne. I think Aldi got ahead of everybody else and submitted really early, which meant they had to go to old business on the agenda, whereas the Uptown was just coming in under new business. So it would be odd to have Aldi go before the actual concept plan. The computer doesn't die. These plan sets are so large that it doesn't do well. I'm not sure where it's at. How did you keep that side? Well, this is close enough, so I'll start here. So this is the site. And you can see all the development around, so Veterans Memorial Park is behind this property and to the north. So you've got Veterans Memorial Park, all of the Central Park townhome development, and the new Carpenter's Guild, and then, of course, post office. So it's the same general area that we've been talking about. So zoning is still C-2, highway service commercial, and then you remember back in the fall, this property just to the northwest was rezoned for apartments, so it was rezoned to R3 for high density, and that's all part of this large development, too. I'll skip the photos since we saw those with the last item. So you probably remember, because the Aldi site plan's been here, I believe this is the third month. So most of you all are probably familiar with it by now, but I'm not sure this is going to cooperate tonight. So this is the store. I don't think the layout's changed one bit since November. There's still parking on both sides of the store. This road here that it's running off of is Floyd Mayfield. Is that right? No, that's Veterans Memorial, excuse me. Veterans Memorial Parkway. And they are showing two access points. Of course, the loading dock and the dumpster are still in the rear of the building. So I don't believe anything's changed much through January, and I know that the planning comments have been hashed out by now. It does look like...
Your item one's an important one.
Yeah, it does look like there's some other comments, but I'll turn it over to Gary and let him turn over those. Thanks.
All right, so, I mean, item number one in engineering is a, basically, to act on this tonight, you're granting a variance, the subdivision regulations, give a process, and reviewing site plans before the associated construction drawings where everything is joining to or approved. Y'all are certainly empowered to do that, it's just an odd thing. Number two is also in Bo's comments in the planning department, this lot doesn't exist and will not exist until there's a final plat. So that's an issue. So this is a site plan on a lot that does not yet exist. So y'all have to think about that on this. And then just, number three's for information, a pre-construction conference cannot be held nor land disturbance permit issued until Uptown construction drawings are fully approved by the city. Now, on the utilities comments, those are really very, very minor labeling issues, and there's no issues between utilities and the engineer, and they have addressed all of our technical, that long list of technical comments, they've addressed all of those. And last, on behalf of Mr. White and the Coats Department, just making sure the building permit application cannot be submitted for the project until the final plat has been recorded and an address assigned.
Perfect, thank you. I will ask our attorney if we're safe to proceed.
Yeah, I mean, you...yes.
There you go. Do we have any questions or comments from the board?
Just to say, just ask the applicant about this.
The applicant, would please come to the podium? State your name and address for the record, sir.
Spencer Schimmel, 6007 Johnson Chapel Road, Brentwood, Tennessee.
Thank you, sir.
So just give you a chance to respond to some of the specifics that Gary laid out for us.
Okay. My civil engineer's been in contact with, I think, both you gentlemen, and we'll be addressing all those specific comments.
Well, they've addressed all the comments, they've done a great job. Okay, your engineers gone through all that, retired them all. The big issue is that this lot doesn't exist. You're tied to Uptown.
Correct.
And this lot that you're submitting a site plan for does not yet exist, and it won't until Uptown has gone through the final plat process. That's what's unusual here. Usually, we're looking at a site plan that's on a lot that exists.
Correct. So we're looking for site plan approval. Obviously, we can't move any further until it is platted, so that's the next step, that we'll be waiting until the next...
Josh, can you go over here?
Please, sir, name and address, sir.
Yeah, Josh, Woodhaven Development Group, 6,000 Fairview Road, Suite 1530, Charlotte, North Carolina. What I would propose is that we just seek a conditional approval tonight. Obviously, we have no intention of changing Aldi's construction documents or their site plan or their parcel. The concept plans have been approved with the same parcel boundaries as is shown in their preliminary plat. So all we're really seeking to do tonight is give Aldi the peace of mind that they're going to be able to construct what's shown today, and our process will remain unchanged. We're going to do everything by the book with the city, start to finish.
Thank you, sir.
So I don't need any final approvals tonight, but if we could get around, you know, the delay and let Aldi continue their building documents, then I think we're good.
I don't think we have to do a conditional, because that's something I know we've frowned upon in the past. But like their engineer said, if we do approve this, they're basically in a holding pattern because they can't pull permits from Mr. White until Uptown Laverne gets as far as the rest of its stuff done.
Right.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to echo what the mayor said. We've tried to steer clear of doing those conditional type approvals for lots of various reasons, but I think the mayor's points were taken about...I mean, I won't repeat it, but I agree with the mayor on that.
So we're fair to move forward with no problems? Okay. So any other questions or comments on the item?
Yeah, just a comment, is that if there is any changes, any changes, you need to come back and force board.
Of course. And so as we sit today, our construction documents are fully fleshed out, and they marry with Aldi's. So for anything to...the only potential change we have is if we do need to grant additional easement to the city to clean up that super item, but I do not envision any potential changes, and we're working with T.DOT concurrently as well to make sure the access improvements don't infringe on any of this.
Satisfied?
With that said, I'll make a motion to accept as submitted.
Second.
We have a motion to accept as submitted, and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Pass this gentleman. So now we will be moving on to item number 12. Preliminary plat, Blair Ridge 1 lot on 15.8 acres, requested by SEC Inc., property located on Blair Road. Tax map 29, parcel 21.01. R3 High Density Residential Zoning District, property owned by 303B Partners.
So I'm not sure the presentation is going to get through, so I'll just read the report. I think somebody said the packet was one gigabyte.
Oh, wow.
Or terabyte, or I don't know, I'm not a computer person.
One of them bytes.
One of those bytes. Anyway, so this is Blair Ridge, the preliminary plat. This is one lot, it's about 15.8 acres. Yeah, well, okay, thanks, thanks, yeah. And this is requested by SEC, of course. This property's owned R3 High Density Residential.
177.
And if you're following along on your laptops, you can look at that. I'm not sure what's going on. I'm not sure what's going on. Does it need to go? It's because it's a terabyte or whatever. It's such a large presentation. So this is a town home development, if I haven't mentioned that. I know I said it was high density. But it's a town home development. And the purpose of this plat is to create one new lot to make way for those town homes and to establish the public utility easements for sewer and water. New parcel will be served by a new internal road. And that will be installed by the developer, of course. There are no planning comments. There are some engineering comments. So I'll turn that over to Mr. Light.
Oh, the engineering, there, there's, there's actually several comments. Now, the engineering comments themselves are relatively minor, but they are, they come straight out of the subdivision regulations checklist. On the utility side, they, Scott is calling out that the existing utilities, as shown, are incorrect, which we'll discuss more under the site plan. But so there's, there's some work to be done on these yet.
Do we have a representative here this evening? Name and address, sir.
John Minor with SEC, 850 Middleton C Boulevard, Marcusboro.
Thank you, sir. Have you received a copy of these as of yet?
Yeah.
Addressed, not addressed?
For this meeting, no. So we'll, we're requested a deferral.
All right, good. We'll see you at workshop two weeks.
Yes.
Approximately. We need to make a motion for deferral.
Make a motion to defer to next month.
We have a motion for deferral. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed? We'll see you at workshop, sir. Item number 13, site plan Blair Ridge, 141 dwellings and 26 buildings requested by SEC, Inc., property located on Blair Road, tax map 29, parcel 21.01. R3 High Density Residential Zoning District, property owned by 303B Partners. Mr. Logan.
So this item is the request for the site plan. And this is the same property as the last item, which was Blair Ridge. And you can see the property now on the screen, and it is outlined in blue. And this is right next to High Point 24, which is a large development that Panatoni has been working on for a couple of years, maybe longer than that. Then to the south is the existing Mobile Home Park that's been there for a long time. And then right across Blair Road is Portico Place, which is a residential development that's also under construction. So it's a really busy area on Blair Road with a lot of projects going on. And the next image gives you a close-up of the property. So they do have, this is an existing house. You can see the shadow there from the roof. And then there's a accessory structure toward the back property line. Other than that, this is a vacant piece of property. And here's some site photos. So that's the home that's currently there. Almost looks like a Brick Ranch-style house. And you can see, too, there's quite a bit of trees on this property. And then there's the driveway off of Blair. And then there's the zoning. So we're looking here at this green area, which is R3. So it is 141 units total, and it's in 26 different buildings. And most of these are five units joined together. Some of them are four. So this layout here shows how the buildings are arranged. And it's more or less in a circle when you drive in and you just make left turns. And go more or less in a circle. The dog park is proposed. You can see it there in the middle, along with the mail kiosk that would be next to it, and a playground area as well. So all those are in the middle, centrally located. And of course, they're also showing that some of these road improvements on the curves have been from the Portico development. So also, the developer has indicated these would be two stories, two stories tall, all the buildings. And city requires, with the old ordinance, 423 spaces. And that's 141 units times three spaces each. So that would be 423 proposed. And applicant is showing 466 parking spaces, including two handicaps. So they have plenty of parking. There's no, no problem there. And I believe that they would not be able to use the new parking requirements because I don't believe that's passed the BOMA yet. So there's no plant, well, one planning comment that we had was, what's the plan for trash pickup? And that's all planning had. And then I'll turn it over to Mr. Light.
You can see from the report that there's quite a few comments and quite a bit of, of work to do on these. Though the one that I would point out is probably being the, the number one is the request for a traffic study. For the, similar developments, we've requested traffic studies, and we certainly want one for this corner, this curve in Blair Road. And at that point, I'll turn it over to Mr. Douglas because there's also a very important one under fire.
Thank you. Mr. Douglas.
So currently, the way it's drawn up with the entrances and exits, you would have to comply with the PTXD of the code. You can actually substitute that if it is sprinkled. So either way you want to go, we can, we can do it that way.
Thanks, sir. Still got a few items to work on this one as well.
Yes, sir.
Same emotions as the last one?
Yes, we'll, we're requested a deferral. But I'm here if you have any questions currently.
Make a motion to defer.
Our second.
We have no questions. Motion to defer in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. We'll see you at workshop, sir. Item number 14, preliminary plat, burnt wood, eight lots and common area on 3.9 acres requested by Hudson Steel, property located at Burntwood Drive and Vineyard Lane, tax map 32, parcel 6.03. R1 Low Density Residential Zoning District, property owned by Gaddy Homes. Mr. Logan.
Thanks. So this is the request for burnt wood. This is a preliminary plat that would create eight lots and common areas on 3.9 acres. So this property is owned R1, which is low density residential. We'll look at that in just a moment. This is image of the property. So this is at Vineyard Lane and Blair Road. Most of you probably are very familiar with it. But this is Blair with the curve that comes up a lot in conversation. And zooming out, you can see, so this is the property near the middle of the image. And then you can see just how much development is to the south. There's really a lot. And of course, this is not far from the last item, Blair Ridge, which is just here to the north. And then you've got Portico and the others on top of that. So busy area. You can see in this orange color, so this is all R1, is low density in the orange color. Basically, everything's south of Blair. So this is a photo of the property that was taken during the snowstorm last week. You can tell. This is the plat that they submitted. And it's pretty simple. It's not very large. But they are proposing the one road in the center, the one cul-de-sac that would serve all the lots. And they are showing sidewalks on both sides of the road. And all of the lots meet the size requirements and setback requirements for the, of the zoning ordinance. And then this is a common area here next to Burntwood Drive. They are showing a small common area.
Stormwater detention.
Yes, that's, that area before the stormwater detention. And other than that, I believe I've covered everything. So turn it over to Mr. Light. Thanks.
Thanks, sir.
There's no comments on this. The note you see is just because of the new stormwater management ordinance, so they know some paperwork they've got to do in the future. But there's no comments.
Thank you. Do we have any questions or comments from the board?
Just have a question in regards to that common area. The detention, should that be split off into its own lot? I know we just had in this same neighborhood, just down the road, where they were splitting off their detention pond into a, into its own lot. So just thoughts from staff on that?
I believe it is a separate lot.
It is?
Correct. It's proposed as a separate lot.
Name and address, sir.
Enoch Gerald with Hudson Steel Engineering, 2115 Northwest Broadbush, but it is a separate lot there.
Okay. Because I see the numbering through eight, but didn't see it numbered as its own.
It's not a buildable lot. It's just a common area for the detention. It won't be a buildable lot. And we can number if you like, but typically you wouldn't.
It will be owned by the HOA, yes.
Yeah. See, we, if it's required, we can number it, but we typically wouldn't. It doesn't matter to me.
Staff fine with it not being numbered? Mr. Logan?
I'm sorry.
Are you okay with it not being numbered?
Not numbered on that detention pond? Should it be lot nine or should it be unnumbered?
I don't, I don't, I don't see a major problem with it. I mean, nobody's going to be able to pull a building permit on that lot, so. Well, I'm just trying to save us trouble because we had the other one in this neighborhood that was, was grouped together with the, with the house. And then they had to basically subdivide it into its own lot. So for me, looking at it, I didn't quite tell it was its own.
I'm okay with that. That's fine.
But if it's, if it is its own, that's my big thing, is just to make sure of that.
We'll make it lot nine and make sure we know that it's a non-buildable lot.
Yeah.
Any other questions or comments?
Number four, is it buildable lot?
Yes, sir. We, like I said, these are, are larger lots. But we, we moved the line between four and five. And those are like a 50 by 60 envelope to the west side of that lot. There's plenty of room, yeah.
Any other questions? Undertake a motion.
Make a motion to approve.
Motion to approve is submitted. We have a second?
Second.
We have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Thanks.
Motion passes. Thanks, sir. Item number 15, site plan U-Haul Phase Two, two buildings totaling approximately 43,000 square feet on 10 acres. Requested by SEC, Inc., property located at 503 New Paul Road, tax map 17, parcel 40.03. I2 Heavy Industrial Zoning District, property owned by America Real Estate Company. Mr. Logan.
Thanks. So this is a request from U-Haul. And site plan approval is what they're requesting. And they are adding finally Phase Two to their property. Building to the front that has self-storage, climate-controlled, I don't know if the whole building's climate-controlled, but I know a lot of it is. So you can see it there on the image. But that was finished roughly in 2020. And so that building's been out there about three years, three and a half. But the, the rear part that's shown here at that time was going to have some areas of covered storage for RVs and boats and other vehicles like that. But they, U-Haul decided to not build that rear part. So they came back here to the Planning Commission and got approval from the, from the Planning Commission to not do the rear part. And I think they did that in 2021. So we're familiar with them, and staff has worked with them a lot over the last several years. They did put in a nice sidewalk on New Paul. So that, that sidewalk is along New Paul at the front of the building. They did that. So that's, that's been covered, and that's good. So none of those comments are, you may have noticed, are necessary for this report. Zooming out, you can see it is next door to the apartment complex. That's really the only residential, even remotely close. It's all industrial warehouse distribution-type facilities all around it. And on the zoning, it's here, outlined in blue. It's a dark blue area, which is I2. So this is a picture of the rear area. This is basically looking west from the back of that building. So on the horizon or in the distance, you're seeing some separate warehouses. I think they're part of the Center Point development. And then again, you can see the back area is just a large expanse of asphalt. Right now, that's, you know, already been graded and is flat. So pretty straightforward. So this is the site plan that they've submitted to the city. So this site plan shows what they're proposing. And basically, they have two buildings. They're calling them B, which is to the north, and then C. So the former building I mentioned would be A. But the square footage is about 15,000. It's like 14,900 for B. And then C is about 28,000 square feet. So that's what they're proposing of this development. And I did note, first building was in the architectural overlay, and that runs out at 250 feet into the property. So none of this is in the architectural overlay that is out there today. So the first building took care of that, building A. The only other planning comment was a photometric plan is required if the lighting is not already installed in the rear. And I'll turn it over to Gary.
All right. We have a few comments. The one that runs through engineering utilities and fire is a general overview. That is the fire suppression and fire protection plan is, is immature for a, a, a complete site plan. And that's the primary thing from those three. Kevin, anything you want to add to that?
If, in the instance that the FTC is, it's going to be a single FTC that supplies both or all three buildings, it just needs to be reflected in the planning.
Okay. And on behalf of Mr. White and the Coach Department, again, there is a retaining wall shown, but it's not a site retaining wall. It's associated with the building. So the design for that would be submitted with the building permit. We don't need to see it now.
Perfect.
That's all our comments.
Thank you, sir. Is there a representative for this project chair this evening? Name and address once again, sir.
John Minor with SEC, 850 Middleton C Boulevard, Marcusboro.
Thank you, sir. Questions or comments from the board?
Low-streeted overlay district, overlay area, what colors the building is going to be? Because we had some issues originally with the building, which got resolved. But any idea what material they're going to, and what colors they're going to be?
Materials, I'm not sure. As far as the color, the color scheme is going to be similar to the front building.
So it'd be consistent with the rest of the building?
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Here? Anything? Oh, we got your question? Yes, sir. Oh, we got your question? Yes, sir. With the fire, do we need to get that on the plans before we move forward?
I would recommend it, yes.
Absolutely. And it needs to be reflected in the planning, just so we need, we can, we can move forward.
I'll make a motion to defer.
We have a motion to defer. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. We will see you at workshop. And you know what needs to be addressed. Thank you.
Thank you.
You got one in.
I know. Everybody else is jumping the gun.
Jumping in on you. So Mr. Logan's items sixteen and seventeen are withdrawn, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. We'll move on to item number eighteen. Site plan auto service center, building addition of, on zero point five zero five acres requested by Chet Rhodes. Property located at fifty-four ninety-three Murfreesboro Road. Tax map eighteen B group D parcel one. C two highway service zoning district. Property owned by Shams Property LLC. Logan.
Thanks. So this is a request for site plan approval. It's actually really just to add an accessory structure to an existing building. So let me get past the two we skipped. Okay, so here it is. So this is, as you probably know, it's at the corner of Mercury Drive and Murfreesboro Road. And I believe a lot of people refer to it as the Van Winkle Small Engine Repair Shop. So it does have the green roof. I think it's had that a long time. And this came to planning commission also about three years ago, and it was in the overlay. So at that time, they added quite a bit of brick to the first floor of the building to get it through the overlay. So that was added at that time. Here's a close-up of the building and parking. So this I promise to not wreck two computers tonight. Okay.
Promise.
I shouldn't promise. So the new imagery shows what they added from the site plan three years ago, which is basically a concrete parking lot. They added some ADA spaces, and then they poured concrete down the rear of the building, and they did add this sidewalk as well with the site plan. So they did a lot of things back, a lot of improvements three years ago. This request is only to add a structure in the back. My understanding is it's going to be installed above existing concrete. So Gary, correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't think it's changing any of the stormwater calculations. The, the main reason it's here tonight is because the architectural overlay does not allow really any materials except brick and stone, and it will allow it will allow some different materials if that fifty and the eighty percentile markers are met, just like any other building Murfreesboro Road, but they had a structure there, I believe, last summer, and that's kind of what led them to have to submit a site plan is that structure shouldn't have gone up, and then it didn't meet the architectural overlay, so that was a problem. So that's what they're trying to get approval for, is that structure. And I, some of the staff comments, the submittal was, did not show planning enough to know what they're proposing. It almost sounded like they want a covering that's got columns and not enclosed. So they need to specify exactly what that looks like, and then they need to submit color elevations, of course, and a materials board, and those are all planning comments for that, too. Other than that, I don't have anything.
Thank you. Do we have a representative here for this project? If you, if you would name an address for the records, sir?
Adam Glenn, fifteen oh one Murns Court, Clarksville, Tennessee. Yes, sir. There's a twelve-by-twenty patio out there off that backside. They're just wanting to put an awning over it, that's all. And there are six brick pillars we're going to erect to hold that awning, just to meet the eighty percentile regulation.
Okay.
Simply a brick, a brick area for the staff, sir.
Thank you, sir. Go ahead, Mr. Logan.
Well, if, if it is just a covered awning, or what, I'm sorry, what'd you call it?
It's just an awning, sir.
Yeah, so then that begs the question. You can't have open storage in the architectural overlay. So that's why when we reviewed it, the staff was like, well, it's, it needs to be enclosed because you couldn't have open storage under the carport or awning, whatever it's called. So that would need to be addressed as well.
I'm, I think, Mr. Coe, you want to give a little history lesson on this one?
Yeah, unless we get some specific plans, exactly what you're trying, trying to do, you know, it's difficult for the staff to guide us, the planning board, of what to do. So I think it would be beneficial if you sat down with staff and, and got drawn up what you intend to do and presented to them and let them work with you to get it where it needs to be. At the moment, it's not really a complete application.
We have submitted, so drawings, and it is simply six brick pillars shown. I don't see them represented here.
Yeah, Mr. Chair. The, the documents that were submitted, quite frankly, look like the exact same documents that were submitted whenever this first came through planning commission a couple of years ago. Because when I first looked at it, I was a little confused because it's talking about new sidewalk and a new brick trashcan, which the, you know, a new sidewalk, you wouldn't put in a new sidewalk where an existing one is. But the, I, I can see where it was just written in as far as, you know, on the, the older ones about brick-encased metal columns. And, you know, it doesn't really address, like, I think there was a wooden enclosed trash area back there at one point.
We were requested to take that trash area, which is present, sir, and enclose it in brick, so we're prepared to do that.
Right, but with this, it shows that it's being moved over, correct? It's going to be moved out of there and moved over to a parking spot?
It's its current placement.
Okay, so.
I'm, I'm going to interrupt. I'm going to interrupt. My apologies, mayor. So if I remember correctly, years ago when we approved this, the trash receptacle was supposed to be placed on that concrete pad. So that in itself is going to justify some more paperwork. We are going to need to know where the trash receptacle is going. We require an enclosure. As Mr. Logan said, there is no open storage allowed in the overlay. That's a small list. On top of that list, we are going to need a materials board, which shows us the type of brick, the color of brick, the material of the roof, material of pillars. So there's a laundry list of things that need to be addressed before we can even consider moving forward. My best recommendation would be to definitely work with staff, get those numbers. Mr. Rhodes is very familiar with the way we do things. I don't know if he's not available. I know he's had some things going on, and we respect that. But you need to get with him and discuss that or someone equivalent. So there, there's some things that need to go, be taken care of.
We also require the, the color elevations.
Yeah, so we will need a rendering, which is a drawing of the facilities, showing us what the final product is going to look like. Once again, Mr. Rhodes is very familiar with this. So it, it's, it can be overcome, so don't think that it can't, but please don't get discouraged. We just need to work through all our steps, and at this point, the application is incomplete. Had we had a workshop, you would have already known this. It would, the ball would already be rolling, so to say. But we didn't have a workshop, so you're just now hearing this. And our, our best option at this point is a motion to talk about this at a later date so that we can address these items, and you have a chance to address these items. Does that make a little bit more sense?
It did.
Excellent. So with that, we'll entertain a motion if there's any other discussion.
I make a motion to defer.
I have a motion to defer. We have a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. We will see you at workshop, sir. Please come, and then we'll go over this again and help you work through it. All right, thank you. Thank you, sir. Our next item of business is item number nineteen, recommendation to the Board of Mayor and Alderman, new zoning ordinance and zoning map. Mr. Logan, I'll let you touch on that for a second.
Thanks. So the update this month is that legal is reviewing it. I believe Evan's going through it. And also, we've been working on our R four district and trying to get the R four district like it needs to be. So those changes are being worked on, and other than that, I believe that's all that's going on. Of course, once it makes its way through legal, it'll finally come back here for a vote. Well, a vote, either positive or negative, to the Board of Mayor and Alderman.
With this being an agenda item, should we vote on it, sir, for deferral?
Mr. Chairman, that, yeah, that's probably a good idea. You could just, well, it's not actually a you don't have a recommendation before the board at this point, so let me think through that for a second. It's probably something we ought to pull from the agenda, so maybe a motion, I don't know how if you have any thought on that, but maybe place it back on the agenda when, when it's ready to be, be presented.
So.
I think that'd be best, probably.
Yeah.
So we would entertain, it would be a motion.
I'll make a motion that we remove this from the agenda until such time that city staff and legal have finished their review and updating and are ready with a recommendation.
Yes.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. And lastly, bonds and letters of credit, ma'am.
Hello, commissioners. You should have the bond list in front of you. It is up to date, and it's all okay.
Thank you, ma'am. With that, thank you, everyone. Meeting adjourned.